Okay, let's call the meeting to order if we could please. First order of business would be the minutes from July 5th meeting. Now to the magistrates. Any corrections or changes that need to be made?
None, I mean, approve or disapprove.
Sam? Second. Motion by Bernard Ice. All approves say aye. Disapprove? Motion carried. The magistrate. That got in my way. I had it in my mind they wanted to come out.
I wouldn't give blame very much.
Next would be your bills list and additional bills list.
Did I say we had the new air conditioner somewhere?
Civic center. Civic center. Actually, it's a one, a five ton unit and there was some other reworking. And we had, in Lane's basement, we were using a, just a portable job. A compressor, not compressor, but a, to get your air through. So we got one that's certified and sized for your building. Down in the basement. Is it a pointer? I can't say that.
It's kind of miserable working out of noise, but they've done a little.
They reworked some of the wiring, uh, piping to make it work.
Thank you.
Let's see if there's anything else.
Seems to be done well.
Good. I don't see anything else out of the ordinary. Everything else is, you know, monthly bills. Entertainer motion to approve the bills, additional bills and transfers. Thank you Jerry. Second?
I got a question.
Jeff, discussion?
What is, what is a water extraction services?
Where's that from?
It's on the clean tech on the additional bill.
I think it's soaked up some water somewhere. Oh, at the state office building.
Oh, for, when it had the...
No, not the, the, it was just a flash flood we had and the water came in the back, underneath the back door or where, or the building and we cleaned the carpet space.
Two weeks ago. Come over and come to your office. I'm the water extraction service now.
What do you do? We're gonna move Brad to higher ground Jim when he comes in down there. We're gonna move Brad to higher ground.
I'm good with that.
All approves say aye. Disapprove? Motion will carry.
Who did forget that again?
I think they all come together.
Next on the agenda, I put on here the lease for the Bloomfield Station and in your mail, in your mailbox today, I put a copy of, of some recommendations from Matthew as far as some minor changes to that lease and actually, some of this I may have caused in my communications with their attorney man, Dr. Rogers. But basically, we're looking at a lease where we'll pay $550 a month.
And that's to the city of Bloomfield?
City of Bloomfield. Could we do a five year lease? It was, for a period of five years and it's, you got some renewables in it and what, what Matthew's suggestion is unless otherwise terminated by the court. Right. Right, and then the renewal under paragraph five. Paragraph five and two just seem to contradict one another. If you all give me some direction, I'll be happy to talk to Amanda and come back to you. There's small, it's a small issue. We can come back with a clean lease for everybody if you want to do that. I'd like to try to get it approved because the council, Bloomfield council wants to move on with it, with the recommended changes that Matthew's... Are they ready to move in? Get close. Yeah, we talked about the gas the other day and some other things.
Should be ready, you know, we were told to be ready before, they should be last week of July.
We've sent notice to our other folks that were...
The others weren't ready. But these are now the two issues you still...
Well, that, the two and five contradict each other, which you probably would need to do because two calls for an automatic renewal and then five...
Five is you gotta give it...
Yeah, you gotta give notice.
Notice.
So they're kind of at odds. I'm just asking for let us work it out, Matthew and I work it out.
Collect the notice better than automatic.
I'm told the notice it gives a little more...
Well, how about you just strike five?
You know, we had a notice on the, on the...
Can you do that?
Want to strike two probably.
Well, if it's not on one system, we had notices, didn't help the situation.
If you strike five though, then it becomes automatic. Keith saying he likes the, the written notice.
You know, just in case something did go wrong, it would be automatic.
I'm, I'm okay with it. Both in court.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with the lease. I think it's a good idea to move them in there so whatever it takes to get it done.
Try to get a motion to approve the lease with the changes whereas the tenant has to give, we have to give notice. Either way.
Item two and five be changed.
Be amended.
amended, right.
Motion by Bernard Ice. Motion by Jerry Hahn. All approves say aye. Disapprove? Motion will carry.
To have that, I guess you could move in.
Please?
If you don't have a lease approved, then you might not be able to move in.
Well, I'm gonna go ahead and get it.
Yeah, we're not having another meeting again until next month.
Okay, on the next item on the agenda, I have not got the paperwork back that I require, I requested from Jeff McKenzie with the attorneys representing Luxco. Basically guys, what I understand from this letter is they're, they're asking for a, a transfer of the state incentives with an approval letter from the county judge going to the state. They, they have other corporations or companies, you see what I was talking about there, have you? And they would ask, they want us to approve the transfer from Luxco to another subsidiary.
How do they need us?
Because the county judge is, you have, the court, we approved the initial incentives to go to the state and we are the conduit of which authorized...
With Luxco we did. I didn't think we did anything with Luxco.
Luxco, yes we did. So, I want to bring this back to you, I just wanted to make you aware of it. I thought I would get the paperwork last week, but I didn't get anything from the attorneys and I will bring it back to you. I want to get that. And I went ahead and put it on the agenda because I thought I might have had it by now. Next on the agenda, I'd like to go ahead and advertise for some police cruisers. We have two in our fiscal court budget and sheriff's got a couple in his budget and he asked me if we could start moving on that as soon as possible. So, entertain a motion to advertise for police cruisers.
How many getting all together?
Four total, two out of this, but the two out of our budget. And he, we're going to try and get this delivered in October, November area.
Are we looking at the SUVs?
SUVs, SUVs, yeah.
We probably ought to note that.
Motion to, if I can get a motion to advertise for two police SUVs by Keith Metcalf, second by Jeff Lear. All approves say aye. Disapprove? Motion will carry. I asked Jan to be here today on the planning zoning amendments, maybe kind of give us a synopsis of what you're asking for here.
The first one we've been working with regulations review committee on, this is dealing with distillate storage facilities. As you all remember back in the spring, the regulations were changed to allow a bourbon warehouse on 100 acres or more in agricultural zone as a permitted use. This is to allow those facilities on tracts that are less than 100 acres but greater than 20, so between 20 and 100 acres but with a conditional use permit. The conditional use permit was recommended because when you start getting less than 100 acres, you have more neighbors close by and so this would allow them to have public notice and come to the hearing and learn about what the project is, what's going on, how it might affect them. So, there would be a public hearing notice that immediate adjoining property owners be notified, so it's a conditional use permit.
We talked about this a little bit and when we were talking about allowing 100 acre deal, remember that? Yeah, you guys, these are the guys I do remember talking about it. Whereas, a smaller operation could set up shop, they have to go through the conditional use permit. Here, you're letting just the big boys have, anybody's got 100 acres, it's pretty salty to just get that done. Here, you'd have a little smaller operation set up.
And 20 acres goes, is consistent with our agricultural division, the 20 acres or more, and then we also had an engineer look at it as to what would it take to have two warehouses on a tract of land and 20 acres would accommodate the setbacks that we're requiring as well as all the containment facilities and everything in the state and local building code required for heavy casual use. So, 20 acres is pretty much a minimum for two warehouses.
And the second part of that was just to incorporate open space and setback allowances as previously allowed to be five, that's more of a, that was a, kind of omitted something from the previous...
We, when we did, we reformatted the setback. Usually the setbacks were kind of in a paragraph format, it was difficult to read. So, several years ago, we put it in the tabular format and some of the language just got omitted. We have somebody that's interested in B5 zoning and when we sat down with them, going through the setback, I knew that it was, the setbacks were from the outer boundaries but it wasn't written in the ordinance. So, when we went back to the old ordinance, it was there and you have a copy of the old ordinance, we just need to put that language back in to the regulations.
So can this be put on any 20 acres anywhere in the county?
If they applied for the conditional use permit and went in front of the Board of Adjustments.
It still has to be A1?
It still has to be A1, it still has to be X.
So they have to have a hearing on it?
Yes, the governor. And like, the permitted use doesn't have to.
The 100 acres or more, you don't have to have a hearing. 100 acres or less, you have a public hearing on it, the way you let the public be involved.
And I can see the 100 acres because that limits the areas around here where these are, this 20 acres is gonna make it where it'll, it could get real cluttered after a while. Really cluttered.
Let me just say this, let me just say this. The law of physics is not going to allow it to get cluttered because you know what one of those warehouses costs?
I understand that.
Yeah, but you don't want it right beside subdivision either. You don't want one outside the backside of Maywood. That's what the public hearing would be for.
I know, but...
And if we allow it, then it's pretty much allowing it. City passed it, I think, didn't they?
The city has passed it, I'm for sure.
I don't think the city's got 20 acres anywhere that they'd put one on either.
Few spots.
I don't like it.
I do. We talked, because we talked about it in our thing, we're trying to lift a smaller brewery type of, we call it craft distilleries.
But it's saying here, it would be okay maybe if you limit it to a, like a 5,000 square foot warehouse instead of a 40,000, that's almost an acre of ground under roof. So two acres of it's gonna be on the roof and, and the back of the subdivision setting. I can just see one, if I did one in my place on River Lane, I'd probably get burned out from all of my neighbors.
Now, do you have 20 acres in your, on that particular tract? You had other ground.
But I'm, I'm surrounded on three sides by neighbors.
But then you probably wouldn't get approved because you have 100 people coming up here.
It's A1.
I know, you'd have to go through the hearing process once I...
I'm just saying if we, if we eliminate that now, we don't have to fight that fight for planning zoner or anybody else down the road if we stay with our 100 acre minimum.
I understand, I understand. Has somebody requested this too?
It was recommended for the regulations review committee to look at it.
We talked about, I promise you I remember talking about when we did.
We did talk about it.
We don't have a particular... So you're just trying to bring this up before it happens?
Right.
What, the, the folks have gone out to the, we call it the old hillbilly heaven spot. How many acres?
Craft distillery.
Yeah. It's got about, how many acres in that tract? Seven?
Fifteen.
Forty, forty maybe total.
Did he get the rest of that property?
I'm not sure we got all of it.
I thought he just got seven to 10 acres or something like that.
He's completely surrounded by, land that hates this lot. But he's gonna be limited to 15,000.
Let's let these guys digest this for today since this is first discussion. Anybody else have any comments want to make on it?
No, I'm just a little hesitant like Sam. We start letting them pop up everywhere, I don't know, I don't know if that's a good thing or bad thing, I don't know.
I mean, as long as this whiskey boom is going, it's a great thing, but if we, if we start allowing them to scatter throughout the entire county, I'm not sure I like that at all.
Again, I think the fact that the investment today is pretty strong and if somebody builds something like it, they're gonna try to make it work. They got, they wanna have some cash. You're not gonna have me go out there and try to build a whiskey warehouse.
Not too many. You gotta fill it up.
Yeah. Anyway, think about it.
Yeah, also, just to let you all know for northeast Nelson County magistrates, planning commission's taking a bus tour next Wednesday. We'll be going out to Chaplain, Bloomfield, Bearfield and then coming back through Cox's Creek, so we'll be out. This is kind of getting them out, looking at areas of the county before they start making some changes to the comprehensive land map. So we did that several years ago in Boston, we took them to Boston, we paved the New Hope area and they came back around through Woodline Springs. So, it's next Wednesday, we'll be over in that part of the county in a bus, so hopefully we'll get them out and looking. We'll probably be going some of Sam's district as well because we'll go down Parkway and Philadelphia Lane and let them see some of the changes out there, so.
Thank you so much. Thank you Jan. EMS report, Joe's out today, so we're gonna go down to the jail report.
Okay, today we have a total of 148 inmates. We have two home counties, one home incarceration, we have 32 state inmates, we have six that are serving weekends, we have three that's out to another county in court. We have an in-house total of 135. The June daily average controlled intake was 722 mandates, we averaged 24 a day. Class D is 396 mandates, so we average 13 a day of class D. Nelson County was 3,228 mandates, that's daily average of 107 inmates. Our total for the month of June was 4,346 mandates, that's daily average of 144 inmates. In the arrest, we had males with 160, females with 60, that's a total of 220 releases. It was 139 males, 61 females, total of 200 releases. Citizen inmates out of district court, we have 13. Three of these are serving weekends. Waiting for court, we have 32. Home incarceration, there's one. None of them is doing community service work, they're not even eligible for it. State inmates, we have current intake, we have 21, we have 11 class Ds. We have two that is serving weekends, out of circuit. We have six that's performing community service. We have five that's home ward for release. Circuit, we've got three that's out of circuit court but they're sentenced to jail time. Drug court, we have 11. And circuit court waiting for court, we have 51, so we'd have a total of 83 that has not been sentenced. That's all I can report.
Thank you Dr. Smith. From court's information, we started some preliminary discussions with the state prosecutor's office about having what we call a rocket docket court, trying to expedite peoples, I mean getting the people out of our, our county jail system faster and I have, I've got some paperwork on that and I'm gonna make some copies for you over the next couple of weeks to read. But it would involve the court participating financially with the Commonwealth of Kentucky and the prosecutor's office and our hopes would be to save county money at the jail and put more state prisoners in our jail versus the county prisoners. But not that we really have county prisoners, they're all county prisoners until they go to court, aren't they Matthew? And the whole idea of get them through the system faster has, they tell me it's working in some of the other counties, we've talked about it for several years, but I will be, we will be making a presentation somewhere along the line with you guys. Questions on that? Do you? Dr. Matthew? I understand the concept. Landfill solid waste report.
I couldn't get familiar with all the permitting, same, well, testing and working on the NOI for the mapping for this middle of the new landfill. We brought up the high lifts burning oil, it's burned probably two quarts oil since last meeting, so it's gone, not burning a lot, but we're really going to get the specs ready to bid a new one, so we have the numbers for a new one.
Have you ever reasoned where the problems come from?
Ronnie came out, Ronnie Dazman, and he could not determine exactly what it was. There's either a thought process, there's an injector possibly sticking and it's more fuel what we're seeing than oil and the fuel actually turns black once it goes through the engine itself, part of the charcoal and heat and whatnot. So we don't know Keith, to be honest with you.
Well, white smoke is only burned...
I miss fuel in sand, black smoke. White, white be anchors.
So, that being said, quarter and a half was 100 acres, we ran it since last time?
I think two days.
And potato.
Can you, can you pull a sample and send it to Cap, or let them test it?
This guy's pretty good. Ronnie's pretty good.
So Ronnie said it could be just a seal somewhere leaking a little bit, but usually a ring on an engine burns a whole lot more than that.
Yeah, he just said run, don't let it out.
Something like that.
So actually what I was working on when you guys were talking earlier, you know, I'm thinking maybe the first week of August we may open up bids on that high lift and then, again, we're just betting we can bring back to you guys where it with it, how the existing one's done, we can make a decision at that point in time. So we're kind of cautiously entering this.
Road department report?
It's all you had, Tom. Yep. Yes? We're bush hogging still course, currently in District One, we've completed third round and two, District One is a third round also. We usually get about four rounds done in a season, as long as we don't have any major breakdowns. We've done pretty good on that this year. We're still boom mowing, we're staffing the boom mower full time this year, trying to get caught up because rain and everything and everything's just out. We get a lot of complaints with limbs and stuff in the, in the road, so we're trying to keep that staff the best we can. Puts some of our crews a little light, but it still works, but when we start asphalt patching, it's gonna be tough to boom mow because I need the people, you know, so. We keep going at it. We've worked a lot of different small projects, had a little problem up on Leonard Hall Road, work on Moss Brown, we're working today there, just all the heavy rain we've had, those type of roads don't do well, but we fixed them. Concrete curb and gutter repair North Higher Street, ditches in Culver's, Pete Hahn, Stoner, Leslie Clark, Merserun, Edwards Avenue, Quarterlane, Moss Brown, we've done work everywhere, so. Done a little workout fairgrounds for the fair to get those guys ready on grading, put some gravel and whatnot out there at the, where the rides go, so. That's about that part of it.
It was nice getting some good phone calls on the boom mower.
On the boom mowing, yeah. You know, it's, it's, like I said, we can staff it full time. I got two four man crews running around, when they're on vacation, then it puts you down to three, as long as I don't need flagmen, we're okay, but when we pave, it takes eight to nine people. It just takes that.
And they've done an excellent job.
So, Dean, one thing on this, there's a request out there for Freeman Avenue to put speed humps, I didn't know if you wanted to bring that up today.
Is that a Woodlawn Springs?
Woodlawn Springs.
Hayalong Association?
I'd like to go ahead and move forward. The government guard, he was over 70, man, he's there. The eighth man on the...
First, there's a little skew in that certainly in this vote that one property owner owned rural lots. He's the original developer.
If you want to hold, we can hold and let you evaluate. I know you've been...
No, no, whatever Sam, I'm okay with it.
I mean, I looked at the application meets the rules, but it does say in our policy you guys got to approve the placement of this thing, so.
And if they're willing to pay for it, I'm willing to...
And that was the deal there, they agreed to pay for it and maintain it if it's torn up, so.
I think they took the right ones in, I think the ones they bought the last time wasn't approved.
That was a, a different association. You have Woodlawn Springs and you've got Hayalong Association. And even though they're beside each other, they're different organizations.
What did you say about the wrong one?
No, one's over...
I know, but I mean, they're all Woodlawn Springs.
Yes, but two different groups.
I got you.
But I'd make a motion to have Jim work with Mr. Croom on the placement of this speed hump.
Motion's been made, so we're second to that motion. Second by Jerry Hahn. Any further discussion? All approves say aye. Disapprove? Yeah Jerry, this was an apparent one anyway.
Elaine, I agree that that's the petition and the application, I think you'll just add it.
Yeah. And then the other association, they voted in vain consistently.
Yes, consistently.
On stop signs and speed humps.
The other thing, Josh, they're just minor things. We've got an unnamed street in Chaplain, Jerry, I'd like for you to work on and trying to get a name for it. Have you done anything on that?
Okay, I can give you this thing.
Yeah, I'm aware of Jan, I just...
Okay.
You know, work off of that.
Right, and then the other thing is, I sent you and I know you've been off Dean and stuff, these, these dump trucks for, we had in the budget to buy used dump trucks and we had our...
Used, were they used for a while?
Yeah, we had 35,000.
Probably some lead.
No, $14,000?
I thought it was 30,000.
No, the budget was 35,000.
Yeah.
These are state dump trucks, Steve went and looked at them and I don't, you don't need anything today Dean, but I did want y'all to study them a little bit.
Committee hadn't really looked at them.
Looked at them, here's the thing is, they've got a hold on them or they're gonna sell them and we got another week or two, but I think we're trying to put another hold on them. They're gonna auction them off is what they're gonna do.
Kind of is get first duties at the state.
Right, and as long as we just tell them to hold them, they will. One of them's, they're, and the only thing these things will basically be used for is plowing. The beds on my two red trucks are pretty well shot as far as rusted out and the bed is $15,000. These trucks are about $15,000 each, you know, is what it boils down to. They're, they're not real young, they're, they're, I don't like the fact. One's a 2004, one's 2001 with 98,000, one's 2004 with 80,000.
How is it not that?
Again, our mechanic thinks they'll work well for plowing, you know, that's, that's what they'll be set up to do because I don't need them for day to day stuff. I got four tandems and plenty of trucks to operate day to day.
That's the information from our general plastic field man, you sent email from that to...
Right.
Hundred percent good, really.
Well, you need to get a computer program, it's hard to see these pictures. And the other thing is, they got a mechanic's truck Dean, that, I don't know if you picked up on that, $7,500 for 2011 and it's a nice truck, it's really good, said, "Worked about 20 grand." It was suggesting that we park our bucket truck, which is, we gotta work on that truck quite often, it's just hard on that, nine speed driving, hand and stuff. It'd be, it's, it'd be a good, be a good truck to buy for the price and it would be a good truck for our maintenance man to drive and use and then if the truck gets parked, that's the best deal of the whole bunch, is that?
Yeah, the beds. The beds. What's a GBW on these trucks?
One smile. This is the one they call the baby tandem.
The baby tandem was about 10,000 last season, our 56,000, 58,000, it's probably 38,000. They sell those trucks, they use those trucks in eastern Kentucky, not so much eastern Kentucky, but areas where the rural areas are a little bigger than a single axle.
It's a lightweight truck. It'd be a nice truck to put on our snow route, some of them, because like the potter shop area, we send a single axle and he's making trips back and forth on the salt and stuff like that.
This truck here is a 6'7" in it?
Six four.
Six four in one, I think. This is first year they came out, 6'7" was 2011, so.
We're talking about the maintenance truck? So Dean, that's an extra thing now, that maintenance truck.
I know.
You're real quiet, I just didn't...
I picked up on that in your email.
His calculator's going off. You can see that, I'm all going.
It's just, it's a nice truck for a price, I mean, it's a...
The downside is, and Mark doesn't, you know, I can see where he's putting a lot of mileage on his bucket truck.
Well, it's where it is now, that's shifted.
But also, an idle truck has problems too.
When we need a bucket truck, we need it to work.
I'm talking about, you know, sitting around and operational wise, and it takes good care of it, real good care of it.
He does a good job. I checked it over him, I wouldn't push anything on anybody if they, but he thinks it'd be a good option. if they don't, but he thinks it'd be a good opportunity, it's just something to think about.
What, what? I would prefer the court would allow this, to have a committee review this for at least a day or so, and if you could, if the committee would recommend, you could go ahead and authorize the purchase of that today, if the committee thinks.
I'd like to look at it.
Yes.
That's what I'd like to do.
You'd like to look at what's going on on your account?
Or they add tractor.
Yep. That'd be fine, you can go with it or Steve.
That's a two-wheel drive on a mechanic's truck, too.
Yeah, that's, you know, it's just a good buy.
It's heavy enough, though, you wouldn't get in trouble with it, though. I can't believe they just sell that for, we looked at some used ones not too long ago, it was $19,000.
Steve said that one's about worth 20 grand, et cetera. The guys take a real period.
Anybody else want to see these? Why don't we do this, because we get a motion to authorize the purchase of the vehicles here, provided that the committee gives approval of the two dump trucks and the single, and the pickup truck. It's all within our budget. And we've never bought a whole lot of state surplus before, we did early on last year.
I'm very eager to be able to all in the bid on that.
You don't have to buy them all.
But in fairness to the state, I got the notice, they're going, getting ready to offer those to the public.
Sure.
And we need them, if you're going to get them, we need to move on.
Where they located, state garage or front?
I'm not sure.
How'd they come up with that?
Give me an address.
How'd they come up with that price? Is that what the average price would be?
Bringing on auctions or?
For that maintenance truck, it'd be in a two-pound limit, 7,500, and then $14,000 for 2,001, that's.
I think a lot of that is a two-wheel drive.
Those trucks have beds on.
Do what?
And what, are they in decent shape?
They're in decent shape.
Could I get a motion for the court authorizing that purchase pending the committee's approval? I'll make that motion, long as Sam goes, looks at it. Motion to approve, second by Jeff Lear. Any further discussion? All approved, say aye. Disapproved? Motion carries.
I'll try to get.
I have reservations.
I will try to get your answer this week, how about that?
By a truckload.
Only got ten votes, it doesn't really matter, no.
With reservations, I want you to just know, this is a case of the engine blows up, and so a week later, I could say I told you so.
Well, the engine could blow up on a new one a week later.
That's right.
Well, we've got one now with a warranty problem, that they want us to pay some money for us, that's another battle, but, yeah.
Anything else you got, Jim? I got some blacktop list.
Yeah, I'm going to give you this striping list.
Okay.
You look it over, and I bet you it up.
Yeah, we need to do that. We got about three of them, we're going to do it immediately.
Potter shop needs it bad.
Y'all figured out?
We can do mall or none, but the weather was bad.
Uh, yeah, the memory is just as bad as the weather, I think, as well.
Oh, okay.
While we're in the road department, the little handicap sign behind the courthouse down there needs to be replaced.
Handicap sign?
Yeah, the handicap parking.
You mean the?
The side of the, yes, behind the side of the, and I'm not sure it's on, it's on the property adjacent to it, but the, they use it for county parking as well, so did we put that sign up or?
I think it's our property.
No, you're talking about over here? Behind the annex building down here.
Behind the chappies, it's the city.
Okay.
But we can put a sign.
Yeah, it's just a little handicap sign.
I'll take it. It's public, so, I think the city's done a little leash with that.
Well, somebody's going to get it.
At what time has tourism on that?
Yes, yeah, somebody's going to get a ticket, it's because you can't really tell it's handicap parking.
Okay. Blacktop list, I've got District Four, Jeff Lear, I made you guys, or he made you a copy of the roads he wants to do with his county money. Number one is Hibbs Lane, the other one's Spaulding Lane, Locust Grove Court, Hall Loop, Venetian Way. Entertain a motion to approve that list?
Make a motion.
I hope so. You went back and forth there more time. Second by Jerry Hahn, all approved, say aye. Disapproved? Motion will carry. Sam, did you have something that you wanted to discuss?
Well, I could do part of it, I'd rather wait to do it all next.
That'd be fine, I just had you. Had you on my radar.
Maybe go check any asphalt gas, we won't run out.
I'm sure they do.
Yeah, we'll get together, find out your say.
Jim and I went through it last week and looked, it's just a matter of trying to decide which ones really need to be moved.
Mr. Medcalf.
None of us fall in, though, is it really?
Is there anything something that has to be repaired in your district?
Depends on where you look.
I was lucky enough to get a half hour demo most time.
Half hour?
Happened every all day.
Well, maybe most of the day.
I didn't threaten to kick him out up on Leonard Hall Road, or I wouldn't want to get back to the office.
She was going to link me up, car don't go by there about every two days, she was going to link me up.
Recreation report, let's move on.